Callers, me and Dar, please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you, and Brad, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is roll call.
Ron Bacon.
Here.
David Hockmeister.
Here.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstein.
Here.
And there are no tabled items, and because of the length of the last meeting, the minutes aren't ready yet. So we go to council business number two ordinance, local income tax ordinance, and it would be number oh three. I need a motion to read it. So the motion by Ron for the second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. Now I read it correct. This is Warren County Council Resolution Number 2021-03, allocation of public safety to fire department, volunteer fire department, or emergency medical services provided under IC 6-3 dot 6 dash 6 dash 8 subsection C.
Greg, I'm sorry. Were you reading the lit ordinance or the allocation ordinance?
The allocation ordinance then? This is what I thought.
I think you want to read the lit ordinance.
Oh, the original, okay.
That's what I thought we ruled.
I have a problem with that, too.
That was what my motion was for.
Okay, sorry.
Read the lit ordinance.
We'll have to get to that later. So that'd be a resolution. Pardon me. Warren County Council Ordinance, again, number 2021-03, an ordinance of the County Council of Warren County, Indiana, modifying the local income tax rates. Now, it's open for discussion, correct, from the council, from the council members?
From the council members, correct.
Anybody have any discussion on it?
Well, same standpoint I've always had, and I'm not in favor of the... All of it as far as the point five, as far as it went in one year, so.
Anybody else? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? That being David and Ted. So the vote is five to two. Okay. Next, do we do the allocation then now?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess that would be Resolution oh four, wouldn't it? Instead of the reporter, I mean, instead of the... It'll be Resolution oh nine.
Yes.
The clerks then would become ten.
No, the clerks would be in ordinance, or not the clerk, the reporter would be in ordinance.
Okay, but the clerk's vote centers, if we adopt that, that would be ten. Since we, this would be nine, if this nine passes, okay.
It's nine.
Now I read the one I read a while ago? That's correct. Okay.
Motion.
I heard Ron make the motion. I already read it, but I'll read it again. Warren County Council Resolution 2021-09.
Yes.
Allocation of public safety to fire department, volunteer fire department, or emergency medical services provided under Indiana Code 6-3 dot 6 dash 6 dash 8 subsection C. And the only one that has applied for this, the only outside of what the original ordinance is for, is Ohio Township. The Ohio Township Fire Department through the Ohio Township trustee had applied for this by the deadline. And so we can allocate up to 15%. And from what I understand, the way it works is Ohio Township, if they use it for their fire departments, which is what it's for, will be 15% upfront of the 12.1 million. It'll be taken off the top first. And then the rest will be allocated by the correct percentage to the cities and towns in that direction they get theirs, and then finally the county will get their allocation that we can use for sheriff, police, ambulance, all the, there's like, I don't know, 15 or so different things you can use it for under the law. But it's all public safety, to secure our public safety. And hopefully, next year, the other township will have reviewed this, and if they want to file for it for some allocation. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I... You know, it doesn't have to be the full 15%.
No, I did not clarify that.
Or it can be a flat rate that you decide to give them off the top.
Flat amount.
A flat amount.
That amount or percentage, it doesn't have to be the 15%, it can be less than 15%. So it's at the pleasure of the council to decide what's best. I'm looking for suggestions.
Greg, was it in the presentation that was given to us past two months, what amount was in that presentation? Was it 15% amount?
15% is what Ohio Township Fire Department requested through the Ohio Township trustee by the deadline. But we don't have to give them that full amount. And what's going to happen is if the same thing, next year, the allocations come up again, if we have other township fire departments that, like Fosinville or Tennesse or Yankee Town, Elberfeld, any of those want to use a portion of that funds, they will come in and probably request a portion of it. So the amount that Ohio, if we gave them the full 15%, the amount that Ohio Township gets next year probably won't be quite as much, since we'd have to pull out the others, is that correct?
Well, correct. I would clarify, though, if a fire department already receives funding of, from lit public safety through a town or city, they are not eligible for this special allocation. So that's why Ohio Township Fire Department is eligible for this particular allocation.
And if, say, Elberfeld, their cut that they get, if they start, they, they will not use it to... If Elberfeld Grove Township comes to us next year and submits the same request of using some funds, then the town of Elberfeld's not allowed to use any of their lit money for fire, or if they're already using, like, their general fund for fire. How does that work?
Well, and I don't know how the Elberfeld Fire Department is funded, but if they're funded from the town of Elberfeld, which will now receive lit public safety funds, then no, they are not eligible for this special allocation. This is only for volunteer fire departments that do not receive lit public safety funding through some other source, like a city or town or the county.
Okay, then I have a question. Is someone here from Ohio Township trustee? How about the city of Newburgh, town of Newburgh? Could I talk, could you come up and ask a question?
I don't know if I can answer it.
Identify yourself for the...
Kristi Powell, town manager for the town of Newburgh.
Hey, Kristi. Does the town of Newburgh currently fund the Newburgh Fire Departments at Ohio Township totally?
So we actually have an agreement with Ohio Township. We work, we have a contract under the Fire Association, and we also have a contract with the township. So we're dual, dual cover there. So our firefighters cover a certain territory that's out in the township. The township purchases equipment for us, sometimes we can use their equipment, but then we also purchase our own equipment, and we have a mutual agreement.
So councillor, how would that work?
Actually, yes, Kristi, you may clarify about this.
Let me clarify, because the important distinction is that, I'm sorry, Chris Wisher, Newburgh County attorney.
Thank you.
In our contract with Ohio Township, the town of Newburgh actually pays, or the township actually pays Newburgh, because Newburgh provides fire services in the township outside of Newburgh. So there's no funding of Ohio Township Fire from Newburgh funds. And I think that's the reverse of what you're talking about, I think.
Right. So in that situation, because the town, which would receive, will receive public lit, public safety funds, does not fund the Ohio Township Fire Department, they will not receive any public safety lit funds unless the council decides for this special allocation.
Okay.
Right.
That was my...
If that helps.
I know that there are fire territories, but all that can be solved by next year, but I needed to solve Ohio Township if we're going to be acting on Ohio Township tonight.
Right, and that's why it's important for each, each unit, whether it's a township or a volunteer fire department, to apply by July 1st, so that we can vet how their funding is. So far, Ohio Township Fire Department is the only one that's done that, and we did confirm that they would not otherwise receive any lit public safety funds but for this special allocation.
Okay, so we need to decide on the percentage for Ohio Township.
The, Mr. President, looking at what, Chris and I were looking at what the possibility was getting brought in by the lit fund, and with quick calculations, it's a possibility that Ohio Township, if we gave them 15%, would be 1.8 million, which in my opinion is a lot. So I'm not sure what the committee, you know, the presentation I heard was a percentage, but it wasn't an amount to be used. So is it necessary to do this, the percentage tonight would be?
So, yeah, well...
Or a certain amount.
By, by September 1st, the council must decide whether to approve an allocation of the public safety lit. So I hate to suggest a special meeting, but if you don't do it tonight, it must be done before September 1st, or, in this particular case, Ohio Township Fire Department will not receive any public safety lit until potentially 2023.
I, given the large number of people in Ohio Township, I think we definitely need to provide something to them. Is there, can we reach the trustee or anything like that? Or can we give him an opportunity to arrive, call him on the phone?
He's out of town.
Oh, okay.
Ian, are you turning him?
Yeah, if we could talk to him, I mean, we can postpone this for the moment and come back to it.
I'm sure he would want the full amount, but I don't know if that's necessarily, yeah. I doubt that he's going to walk that back. Well, probably not. We still think that's an awful lot. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, I mean, if we wanted to, I think we need to take out something.
The next year will probably be less anyway.
Well.
Can we, is it proper for me to make a motion to allocate 10%?
Yes.
Then I should do so, that motion, I'll take 10% to the Ohio Valley, Ohio Township Fire Department.
Motion by Ron for 10%. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Brad.
Yeah.
Do you have one on the phone? I think Chris Saylor says he does have it.
Okay. Why don't you hand it to Ron? Ron, you read those numbers again, please.
Well, they were just estimates. I mean...
Well, it's round, you're rounding it off.
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we were just looking at the estimate, and from the 15% that you were requesting, our quick estimation is that's 1.8 million. Is that what your number was?
Well, the 15%, I was not sure what the overall number would be divided out amongst all the townships that had a fire fund. So the last numbers that we were working off of, I think the estimate was 1.2 million. That would be the 15% of township numbers. But that would be for all townships.
Yeah, that was all townships, but you're the only one that submitted, so you're the only one that we're going to be voting on. Everyone else is basically out of the arena for this year.
Okay.
Okay, so let you know.
I thought that a conversation, I was told earlier from Greg, were they not able to take the request that we made on behalf of all the townships and use that for this year?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got to make a decision tonight on what to give you, just Ohio Township because the others, the others have not submitted, so we'll have to wait on them till next year.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm, my motion right now is just submitting is 10% of it, which is going to be approximately...
12 million. One on one point.
Yeah. Slightly over a million, so...
Okay.
So that is the motion that's on the floor right now. Okay?
And then we would just come back and work with you guys for next year.
We have, yeah, this has to be redone every year.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Satisfy everybody? Yep. All right, have a motion on the floors. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the 10%? Raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? Four to three. Let me write that down, four dash three, and the three were David, Rick, and Ted. Next up is election business, clerk. Please identify yourself.
Patty Perry, Warren County Clerk.
Hey, Patty, you may want to wait this a second. Go.
Thank you all for coming.
Patty, you're all walking out on you.
They're leaving quietly.
Especially funny in Lakeview.
Patty, you're all walking out on you.
I know. Please, I won't take it personally.
They say there's no interest in vote centers.
Yeah.
I think we're good now.
Patty Perry, Warren County Clerk.
Andrew Skinner, Warren County Election Board President. Good evening, council. Wanted to ask for the council to approve the resolution. What, we're at 10 now?
We are at 10.
We are at 10, I think I was listening right there. Okay, so this would be 2021-10, and as you may know, the Warren County Election Board has been working to, through the process, the statutory process of figuring out a vote center concept for Warren County versus the precinct-based voting concept that we have been doing in Warren County in previous elections. The vote center concept would be, much like Vanderbilt County and half the counties in the state of Indiana, where a person can choose to go vote at any place that they want rather than being assigned a certain polling place. Part of that process involves creating a committee and getting, collecting various documents. One of those documents that has to be collected is a resolution from the council and a resolution from the commissioners that just basically says the council and commissioners approve with the concept of being a vote center county. The actual plan of how that looks like is actually voted on by the election board and created by the election board through a vote center committee that has a council representative, a commissioner representative, party representatives, and other representatives. So what we're asking tonight is you to pass a resolution that simply approves Warren County to be a vote center county, but not necessarily approving any particular vote center plan, because that has not been finalized yet. But we have to have a signed resolution to add to our plan once it is finished.
So will that plan come back before us as well, or just this resolution is the only thing?
The resolution is the only thing, yeah. And then eventually, we'll, of course, be back to you in terms of what it does to the budget for elections, in terms of switching from a precinct-based voting to a vote center concept, and how that budget might look different next year.
Of course, it'll look much more efficient.
We hope so.
And what happens is, after we have this done, it is submitted to the Indiana Election Division.
The election board will hold public hearings, a meeting, a 30-day public comment period, and county voters have an opportunity to comment on the proposed vote center plan once it's put out there for everybody to see. And then we, the election board meets to make decisions on whether or not there's any amendments needed, and once they decide it's final, they vote on it. It has to be unanimous vote to pass, and if it is passed, then it goes to the Election Division for them to file. And it becomes automatically approved if they don't, they don't, they don't have an option to say, no, we don't like that plan. As long as we've met the statutory requirements, it's final and implemented upon filing with the Election Division.
And so just to clarify for the minutes, which I think I already have a good understanding of what this is and how this process works, but basically, this will eliminate the restrictions on, I have to vote at a place A, I can vote at any place in the county that I want to, as long as meet the residency requirements, I can vote anywhere that I want to. So I don't have that confusion as to if I move somewhere, am I in the right place? Or, you know, those types of things. So it really should make that a very, a much simpler process, even though there may be fewer voting spots, but they will be, people will have a, probably really a broader chance to vote at more places, I mean, in the long run. I mean, does that, does that kind of sum that up more or less?
Absolutely, that's exactly correct.
So all the vote centers then will be able to assign us our own precinct. You're still voting in your precinct, but you're not necessarily voting at a assigned precinct location.
Correct. Everybody's still assigned to a precinct, they just will not have to vote at a certain location. They can vote at wherever, wherever's convenient for them on Election Day, or at one of the early voting places that will be part of the plan as well, prior to Election Day.
Which was very successful during our last election.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Ted and second by Rick. And I guess the motion being for me to read it first and then approve it.
Yeah, I thought we'd do that so we could have discussion.
This is Warren County Council Resolution Number 2021-10, a resolution approving the designation of Warren County as a vote center county. So I have a motion on the floor and a second. Any more discussion?
Is it going to be permanent? You don't have to do that.
A unanimous vote makes it permanent until a unanimous vote undoes it.
So it has to be unanimous to undo that?
Has to be unanimous, yeah. It has to be unanimous to change it or undo it, correct.
I just hope you get most of the bugs worked out from where it was, was eight or 10 years ago, maybe 12. You had the vote center down at Newburgh Library or Ohio Township Library.
Exactly. Early voting place.
And that was, well, I talked to a lot of people as far as the line, and they said, you know, get out of the crowd, or they're stacked up all the way to the door, they'll be waiting. It didn't make sense, you know, that's what, I hope this will help some of the bugs get worked out of it.
Our early voting was very successful. I don't actually have the numbers, and we've had nothing but positive comments on the early voting.
And if there was going to be trouble, it would have been last year.
Exactly.
We had twice as many people vote early than we did on Election Day this, this last year, and I don't, I don't remember there being any complaints. There were lines, of course, because there were so many people wanting to vote early, but again, no complaints about the lines. And this, we had two locations, one in Newburgh and one in Leadville.
Leadville.
And we would propose, part of the proposal for the vote center plan would be to have the same two locations. So you'd actually have three places to vote early, Leadville, Boomville, and Newburgh, which allows you then to reduce the Election Day locations to a smaller number.
I think this would be a positive step for Warren County and the voters. It'll alleviate some of those line problems and not knowing where they vote.
Any more? All those in favor? That's all seven of us, seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is number four, park recreation business. Parks and Recreation Maintenance, that's for a lift station at Dan Rhodes Sports Park, $2,000 additional appropriation. A workman's comp due to an audit, $5,400 that they need to pay in additional appropriation. Water utility bill's gone up because there's more usage, $17,000 additional appropriation. Fireworks, $2,500 additional appropriation. They did take admission, from what I understand, and the total is $28,000 additional appropriation.
Ben Labar, Warren County Park Department. Any questions on any of them?
Wasn't sure if that's really you or not.
Got a little, two more.
Motion to approve all four. Total of 28,000.
Motion by David, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion?
Why is there an asterisk by the fireworks? I thought asterisk.
It was a reimbursement, it's a reimbursement.
Okay. Because for years, we asked them to charge, and they weren't, now they're charging, so...
That's the gate deposit.
Yeah. Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, all those in favor? That's all seven of us.
Thank you.
Who's the second?
Number five, coroner business, additional appropriation. Autopsies, $50,000, lab and toxicology, $3,500, mortgage fees, $2,500, for a grand total of $56,000.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, so we can discuss.
All, all three, you're...
Yeah.
Motion by Ron, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris, now we can discuss it.
I talked to Sarah, the coroner, this evening, and asked her directly, you know, why is this, you know, doing on? So we, and she did bring it up during budget, that she was going to have this expense, she's already used her budget for this year for autopsies. The problem they're having now is drug-related, so that with the overdoses and not necessarily the COVID or anything of that nature that's having any effect on them, but it's the overdoses that they're having out of the county. So and she's kept the budget as low as she possibly can, and we discussed that, I said, I think you're making a mistake of asking for too little in that department, where you show that you're using it, and we need to up it. If you don't go over it, then we can get it back. But that was a discussion we made, so that's what it is, that I really feel that it's, it's a...
a legitimate excuses, the, or expense, the costs are not actually per autopsy going up, it's just the number of autopsies. And that's not predictable each year. I mean, you can just kind of guess on it. When I was six years as the coroner, that was what I was doing, that also was guessing on it and what was going to happen. Some years were good, some years were bad, so. And she's put in 50,000, she may not use that much. We don't know. So and if she doesn't, then it'll revert back to the county. And the lab toxicology also and mortgage fees are based on those numbers, same numbers.
And basically she has spent all, well, that budget, she said she'd spent all but $300 of, of the autopsies line item already.
Ron, of course, I know you're past the corner, you add quite a bit of insight, but other than the parameters, what requires an autopsy, it's still in the coroner's option?
It's always the coroner's option to do an autopsy, but there's guidelines to go by for, you know, if it's an accident, suspected, I forget what the terminology is again, been too long since I was coroner, an unexpected death, unexpected being the key word. You know, if I'm on hospice and expected to die, well, then an autopsy is not required. But if it's an unexpected death for any reason, you should do an autopsy to prove the reason, the death, and the reason for that are many, to prove that it was not an act, prove that it was accidental, if it was an accidental overdose or a suicide, or if it wasn't, to prove it wasn't a homicide. So that's the purposes of it. And it's also for insurance purposes, because of, it's an accidental overdose, so then it's an accident. If it's an overdose on insurance, then they won't pay to suicide. So suicide, and it's just in the insurance policy, it's all in that, if it is a suicide, they won't pay out the life insurance. So if it's an accidental, but you have to do the investigation and make that determination as the coroner, but it's always your discretion to do that, so.
Was there a mention at the budget hearings too about some tainted overdoses where there was like additional?
She did, she mentioned something about some, some of the, I don't know which drug it was, but something was laced with something. Oh, yeah, the lacered fentanyl, yeah, finding out what they're being laced with. That's been, you know, a big problem. And so, so they're buying the drugs off the street and they're lacing them with fentanyl and then.
And then that could result in?
Well, yeah, you're taking it and you're dead, but you didn't, you weren't, yeah, that could be charged in a homicide, but on the individual who died, it wasn't their intent.
Sure, sure.
And that's what you've got to prove. If it was laced with fentanyl, that's definitely was not a suicide.
It seemed like she mentioned that that increased the number of autopsies.
Yes, and that's almost, we have that problem on a statewide basis and have been for several years now.
Crystal, what was she budgeted at this?
I believe it was 40, I didn't, I might have that, but I don't think I brought it with me. But I think she was budgeted 40 and she spent all but $300.
Okay, that's close enough, thank you.
Ron, if, if I request an autopsy?
I'm sorry.
And she hadn't determined that there was one necessary? Am I responsible to pay for that? Is that, is that just at the coroner's discretion? It's at the coroner's discretion, and if we find that we, you know, the coroner does not feel that there's one necessary through their investigation and the family wants an autopsy anyway, then it's their, financially it's up to them to do that. And that has happened, and does, you know, there are times that the family thinks there's another problem, so when the investigation doesn't show one.
Is it $1,800 for autopsy or?
There's a base around 15 to 1800 dollars, but that's not where it always stops. And depending on what you have to go through, that would be a basics, I mean, I think when I started, it was 1,200, I think now it's about 1,800. And that's all for the pathologist who's doing the autopsy, and the pathologist has, forensic pathologist is required by law to do the autopsy, not any physician, it has to be a forensic pathologist. And then you also pay for the lab test and everything else that's involved. If you think there's something else that needs to be, there's some specialties. I did one that when I was a coroner, we had a, an infant that died and we didn't have a pathologist that was trained to do that, so I actually took it to Louisville to do the autopsy, to be certain it wasn't a homicide.
Thirty-two thousand was the budgeted amount for the year.
And she spent all of that into 300 now.
She's requested 46, I think, for next year.
And I told her, I think we need to, after we finish looking at this, we need to increase that a little bit, but that would be at our different meeting.
Any more discussion? I'll call a question then. All those in favor? That's six, all those opposed, one, and that's David. Six, one. Okay, recorder business. There's an ordinance of the county council, it was the ordinance number four. Warwick County Council Ordinance Number 21, 2021-04, an ordinance of the county council of Warwick County, Indiana, approving the county recorder's office expenses for the 2022 fiscal year. And she gave the sworn statement, you also have a copy of that, of the 1189 expenses in 2022. This is the perpetuation fund, from what I understand. She has to give us a sworn statement, and we have to adopt a resolution to spend that money, I guess, or ordinance. Motion to approve. And a motion by Brad, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Okay, David, there's a tie.
David can have it.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's all seven of us, seven zero, thank you. Next up is court business. Additional appropriation for office equipment, $59,976.04. This would include all four courts and the three Superior, one, two, Circuit, and the magistrate.
Heather, I don't know where the courts are, but would you mind to speak on it a little bit? Yes, Heather. Well, remember that it was, there's a grant and there's a reimbursement for the.
And so Warwick County Commissioner's Office, what this is, is that they had a recording system installed through all four courtrooms. That will be reimbursed by a grant as soon as these are all paid for, but they didn't have it in their budget in order to make this purchase completely. So in order to do that, they need that additional appropriation, that money will revert.
And to follow up on that, so they agreed to ask for it all out of the user fee fund, probation superior, which are plenty of money, and then it will be reimbursed back into that use.
Motion to approve. Second by Brad, second by Ron. Any discussion? All those in favor? Did you vote for that? That's all seven of us, seven zero. Next up is building department additional appropriation, motorized equipment, $10,000.
Dennis Lockhart, Warwick County Building Commissioner. If you guys remember, I came in front of you in May to try to purchase a vehicle for the building department. I asked for 40,000, received 30, and I was told to see if I could find a used vehicle or an economy vehicle. And I've looked for two months for a used vehicle, and they're as high as new ones. And they're usually like a 216, 217, got 70,000 miles on them, and no warranties, most of them neocut tires and some brakes on them. So for two or $3,000 more, you can get a brand new vehicle, and I, I mean, I think that's a no-brainer with, just for a couple thousand, we're getting another ve, a new vehicle, so that's what I'm here tonight for, asking for another $10,000, and I would appreciate your consideration on this matter.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, who motioned, I'm sorry.
Ted.
Ted, and who seconded? Thank you.
I didn't get that either.
Didn't, Rick.
Ted, Rick.
Approved.
Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, opposed. Two, five, two, and that'd be David and Brad.
I thank you guys for your support.
And that's all fee money, none of the county tax money. Nine A, sheriff's business.
This is a reimbursement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Brad, second by Dave. David, so, let's see. Any discussion? $10,600 additional appropriation. All those in favor? It's all seven of us. Next is the commissary report, what you all have. Had a chance to read over, appreciate the report, giving us that information.
Sheriff Mike Wilder, you have, we do a biannual report, that's, this is the middle of the year report. No questions, I'll sit down if there ever is, ask them, but anytime, anytime any of you would like to come out and see commissary, obviously you're welcome to, what we spend it on and everything, different things, welcome to come see the books anytime, not just when this report comes out.
And the sheriff has an open invitation to all of us to come out there and view the jail at any time, he and Jeremy or somebody will help, help show us what we have and some of the problems we have, since we are going to be looking at that as one of our next major obstacles.
Also, thank you all for tonight, also earlier, your support, thank you.
Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Ron and Rick, I don't think we really need to do that, but we'll do that anyway. All those in favor?
I know.
I'll say, it's just a report.
Okay.
So I just, we'll just, you'll withdraw that motion if that's okay?
Withdraw.
Okay. Auditor's business, official records, and that's something to do with a subscription service to a portal, $1,600, and electronic data storage, $1,600, that's a transfer from official records to electronic data storage.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Motion by David.
I wanted to hear her presentation.
Thank you.
Rick seconded, I think, right?
There's a tie.
There's a tie. All those in favor? It's all seven of us. All right, next up is the council business of budget estimates.
They just have to be read for the minutes, and I've already given Christine the copies, so.
So I, I've read through them, and all I have to do is read the titles here. Budget estimates, read into the minutes, 2022 estimated tax cap, 2022 library estimated max budget report, 2022 miscellaneous revenue, 2022 maximum levy, estimated maximum levy, a 2022 estimated maximum mental health, 2022 estimated debt service payment and levies, 2022 estimated cumulative fund maximum rates. That's all that needs to be done, but we need a motion. Motion to approve. Motion by Brad, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, seven zero. That circuit breaker report was interesting. And we have, under other business you just received tonight, a salary ordinance, handbook issued, juvenile probation officer, vacation days equals 80 hours for a total of $1,397.46. Motion to approve. Motion by Brad, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rick. Discussion? All those in favor? It's all seven of us, seven zero. All right, any other business? Sign-in sheet?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Rick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Brad, all those in favor? All right, it's all seven of us, thank you.
Crystal, just for the minute, our next meeting.
Yes, and the next budget session is August 17th at 5:00, and our next regular meeting is September 2nd at 6:00.
And in the budget session, will we hear the report from the personnel there?
Yes, you will, and you will actually get the report before, I just haven't finished the agenda.
Okay, and I guess you'll plug all the figures in to see, make sure we're not getting our cash balance messed up.
Yes, I've done that, I have, I've used an over estimate, so, yeah, if there's a problem, I will let you know.
Okay, yeah.
August 17?
Yeah, yeah, August 17.